I call this special meeting of the MSAD 49th Board of School Directors to order. Roll call, Bouchard. Vutu here, Brown Woods. Cagley. Davis Olson. Dumont. Hachey. Hasi. Noel. Lambert. Meschul. Dwight. And Williams. Can you please stand for the put in the leather? Approval of minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the June 21st, 2021 school board meeting? It's been moved by Heather and seconded by Roy to accept the minutes of the June 17th, 2021 school board meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Nine. Oppose? None abstain? Motion passes. Next on the agenda, citizen input. We invite anyone from the public to address the board. We have a microphone set up. We're asking for you to please come forward to the mic so we can hear you.
We cannot understand what you said.
You can't hear.
The essence of real here coming out, you can't hear your words.
Okay, I'll use my loud mom voice.
There we go.
Okay. We invite anyone from the public to address the board. Please come forward to the microphone we have provided because we would like to hear you. Once I myself, the board chair, acknowledge you, we state your name and the town in which you reside. You will have three minutes. The board has cast citizen input to one hour. We want to hear from everyone, so if we have to extend it, we will. Again, during this time, the public has the floor. The board will listen. And will not interact if there are any questions directed to us. Please be respectful. We are here to listen to you. We are respecting that. Again, when it's our turn to discuss, to conduct the business of the district, we also ask for your respect to allow us during that discussion time. So anyone who would like to come forward to speak, you guys have the floor.
How you doing? Ryan Robinson, Clinton, seventh grade. First, I'd like to say you guys are some pretty big decisions today. As you can see, I hate doing this, but I'm so tired. Your decision will impact many people, positive and negative. Most negative, I think, are those the way the town is hurt, or different than other towns in the near. Kids sitting in a day without being able to talk and with facial learning disabilities and all that other stuff. I just hope you listen to the people that elected you rather than an administration or a state. Represent us, not them. You are the voice of the people. Our kids are not in danger of said COVID. Of three million COVID cases in a year and a half, there's been 296 kids who passed from COVID. In 2018, 2019, 211 kids, just, sorry, 211 kids have passed of seasonal flu. And that was only one season of seasonal flu, not a year and a half of COVID. So again, our kids are not at risk with this. Teachers, adults can give back to people if they feel that's what they want to do. So they are protected if that's another word. Parents want to make a decision on whether their kids wear masks. Give us that decision. Whether you have to sign a release or whatever it might be to protect the school, I'm pretty sure everybody can find that. Other schools will let the parents choose. When I coach at the Comets, it's like parents choose Herman High School, Brewer High School, Madison High School, and just recently, MMA just released that they are not making their students wear masks either at full college. Just let us make the choice, that's all. Thank you for your time.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Mitchell Lawson, I live in Fairfield. Good evening. Can the audience hear me as well? Is that a little bit better? Just a little bit about me very quickly. I graduated from Lawrence in 2014. I worked at Fairfield Pal for five summers, absolutely loved it. I was a substitute teacher in MSAD 49 for several years. And in 2018, I graduated from the University of Nana Farmington with a degree in education. I'm currently a science teacher in another district. But I'm not here as a science teacher, I'm here as a citizen of this town. Members of the school board, the decision of whether or not to wear masks must be the parent's choice. Having the privilege of attending Lawrence High School, I can say that all of my teachers, all of them, were outstanding. In fact, my favorite teacher, Kevin Malini, was recently named Somerset County Teacher of the Year, and I'm very proud of that. I know firsthand the wonderful experiences and opportunities that this district can provide to its students. However, it is not the responsibility of this school to make health decisions for students without the consent of their parents or guardians. The decision of whether or not to wear masks must be the parent's choice. It is the responsibility of the parents to make health decisions that are in the best interest of their child. Are there parents who have little to no concern for their child's well-being? Unfortunately, yes. And there always will be, pandemic or not. But I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that the parents who are here tonight to speak against your potential mask requirement are the kind of parents who care greatly for their children. One more thing. As a teacher, I hear a lot about providing equity for students, equity, ensuring that education is equitable. What does that mean? It means that teachers recognize that every student is different. It means that we, as teachers, give students what they need on an individual basis in order to learn, even if it may be different from what another student needs. If you decide to oppose this mandatory mask-wearing for all students across the board, you will be sending a message to this entire community that equity does not matter to you. As a resident of this town and a registered voter, I urge you to make masks optional for everyone, thinking.
Hi, guys. As you can see, I still scrubs work at the hospital, unfortunately, not for long. My name's Mandy Yorga, I graduated from Lawrence since 2009, so it's been a while. I have a son, he's going to sixth grade this year, and I hope that we won't enforce masks just because I believe it should be the parent's choice. And I think a lot of people feel that way. I myself am a frontline healthcare worker, I work in imaging, I do CAT scan, MRI, in general, x-ray. I have x-rayed more COVID patients than you can count, and none of them have been children. Nobody that has died within, I work at Maine General, I also have worked at the VA through this. No one there has been kids that has passed away from COVID. It was a terrible disease, I've seen that firsthand. And I really hope that you guys will give the parents the right to choose whether they want their kids to wear masks or not. I think that putting a political outlook on this is not the right thing to do. I know we're supposed to follow CDC guidelines, and I have been doing it this entire time with masking and wearing goggles and gowning for every single patient, but when this first started, CDC did not care about that. We had to wear, we got one N95 mask, we had to put it in a paper bag with our name on it and use it multiple times on the same patient throughout the day because there wasn't enough PPE to go around. And then they would sanitize it and give it back to us to wear it again the following day. This went on for weeks and weeks and weeks. So if someone has been in the front lines of this, I urge you to listen to me, and I know there's other healthcare people out here because I recognize some of them that I work with, and hopefully they'll stand up and kind of tell you what they witnessed within the hospital system this year. At the most, we had 14 COVID inpatients at a time, that was at the biggest height of this, that's the most we ever had hospitalized at the same time. So I don't know if you guys have seen what's been going on in the hospitals or not, or what you've been hearing on the news. I know they kind of don't correlate each other, you hear a lot of things, but please let parents choose, I'm begging you. I want my son to be happy in school, he was so devastated last year over the masks. He was devastated that we were hybrid learning, and hybrid learning did not work for him at all. He's brilliant, he's smart, he's a straight A student, so please, no masks, thanks, guys.
Hi, I'm going to the joint appointment. The right to swing my fist ends where the other remains, both begin, says Justice Oliver Williams Jr. in this Supreme Court. I'm speaking tonight to ask that we continue to call for mandatory mask-wearing indoors regardless of vaccination status. My daughter, Reagan, is entering second grade and so far has not been able to experience a full school year due to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Districts in state show that last year, mask-wearing prevented in-school transmission of the virus and basically eliminated the flu, which caused COVID continuing to many instances. The fact that we know that masks are necessary and that remote learning does not, please give my child a five-day week in-person learning without the need for access to student exposure. Thank you.
As the chair, the MSAD 49th Board of Directors, good evening, my name is Lord Kinley. I thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of the motion to require the wearing of masks to prevent the limited spread of COVID-19 virus. I know that the requirement for wearing masks is not always welcome, masks are nuisance, they're uncomfortable, and certainly they are an inconvenience. I'd like to share with you a couple of observations from last year when I was a member of the MSAD 49th Board of Directors. Most of the infection that we had to deal with in the MSAD 49 was community infection, which was brought into the school system. Last year, there were 82 positive cases of COVID-19 in the district, which resulted in almost 900 individuals having to be put into quarantine. While there was a minimal transfer of the virus within the district, the quarantines resulted in disruptions to learning and great inconvenience to the affected families. The confinement of the virus was due to the district's extensive effort to sanitize and socially distance people, and that mask did play a significant role in assuring that the virus did not spread. As a side note, I do want to commend the district for this summer purchasing a number of air filtration units which will be placed in each classroom. The other thing that I experienced last year that I had not expected was I ensured that there would be a vigorous pushback by students and staff to the city requirement to wear masks. It never happened. Surprisingly, students and staff to be both walkin' and wore their masks. The coming school year comes with the hope and expectation that learning in MSAD 49 will return to normal. Sports and other recreational activities are back, and all students thankfully will return to in-person classes. The only question is, will this be sustainable? Early this summer, it appeared that the worst of the pandemic had passed. Unfortunately, the virus mutated, and now we must deal with the Delta variant. It is a version of the virus that has proven to be twice as infectious. With no children under 12 being eligible to be vaccinated, that provides a large portion of the school population as being vulnerable. All students, whether vaccinated or not, are carriers, which means they can transmit the virus back to their families and friends as well as others in school. Masks have been proven to be effective in preventing transmission of the virus. They are not 100%, but along with other deterrents assure that our schools will be safer for students and staff. I therefore urge the MSAD 49th Board of Directors to keep our students and staff safe and to adopt a school mandatory mask-wearing policy. Thank you.
School board members, thank you so much for your time. My name is Heather Hodgson. I work at Lawrence Junior High School as a grade seven and grade eight, not a teacher. I'm gonna get straight to my point. I'm not here to talk about COVID-19 numbers, statistics, or probability. We all have heard enough about COVID-19's physical health on individuals. What we have not heard about our students is how COVID-19 regulations and mandates in our schools have impacted our students' mental health for the last 17 months. My classroom is close to the guidance offices. Guidance counselors are angels. During a normal school year, when a student has an issue, they focus on that issue and not learn. Their mental health is my top priority. If I have a concern, I immediately call the guides to help my students COVID, whatever situation they're dealing with. Last year was horrific. As a parent, that teaches, and as a human being, the one thing that worried me the most was seeing the fear in my students' eyes and body language each day. Questions were more difficult for them to ask about COVID, the restricted environment. Students were especially mentally distracted by wearing masks during our school day. Was it okay that they were angry and could let their masks down to have a snack in the classroom or for a simple drink of water? Would I, the teacher, make them go to the hallway to take their snack, or take a drink of water, and have all their peers look at them and judge them? Would they get yelled at for not wearing their masks correctly? Was the teacher talking? Was it okay to ask the teacher to speak up? Did they do something wrong, is the teacher yelling at them? Et cetera. We did our very best last year. However, mask-wearing has tremendously compromised our students' mental health and created ignorance and anxiety. Our students just had summer vacation and most likely did not wear masks if they had summer school. They did not have to wear masks this summer. When students come to our school, they want to feel nurtured, happy, and valued. However, your faces plates all this away and so much warmth from them. School board members, your job is supposed to get easier after last year. I assume you're putting your own personal experiences into your district-wide mask-wearing decision. Some of you are parents to students in our school district and know what you want for your children. However, I'm gonna ask you to give this decision to all parents in MSAD 49, not just yourselves. However, I'm going to convert this evening. If teachers want, they can protect themselves by getting the vaccine and/or choose to wear masks, but if we start the school year dictating only wearing masks, we're doing more mental harm than good. Please make this choice for all. Mental health is weighing heavily on our school district and community. Let us make it be our focus for this year. Let's be happy again in our learning environments. A smile is like a hug. Thank you. Better? Better? Sorry. First time here, first time ever doing this, so I'm trying my neck is a blocky, and the eyes, my voice will go in and out, just because I stand so strongly about this. My name is actually Wilson, I'm entered. This is my first time ever doing this, ever voicing my name, just because I feel like posting on social media just is not working anymore, it's not getting us started. So, I have two children who are coming home in this district. Last year, we were 100% remote strictly because of masking mandates. I do not believe in masks, I believe that we have our own immunity and our own immune system to do that for us. Masks do little to no good with the spread of this virus. I do agree, yes, they do work to some extent, but viruses go through your mask, whether it's live or it's social. Especially if it's worn multiple times, putting your pocketbook, put back on, put on the kid's backpack, put back on, they're not effective anymore at that point. I'm not here to argue facts about COVID, but I am here to say that parents should have the choice to mask your child or not. I know of at least three of you on this school board that do have children in this district. I hope that if I stand up for what you believe is right, and what you believe that you should do as a parent, let alone as a school board. What may be good for you and your child may not be good for me and my child.
Mask, ugly.
Sorry, excuse me. And so again, if you choose to mask your child, that is absolutely on you and your beliefs and what you stand for as a parent, but as myself, I would be choosing not to mask my child, because if your child masks work, then my child not wearing a mask should not affect your child. My children are very, very excited to go back to school, they actually begged me halfway through last year to go back to school, but myself as a parent, I said I can't do that, not knowing what the effects are for wearing a mask, a mask is long-term, all day long, sitting in a classroom, not getting mask breaks. I hope that this year, you guys can make this more enjoyable for my children to go to school with the optional decision. If you, I know you're not answering a question, but a question to think about or what I have not heard anything about is if you are planning on masking, what is our district doing about virtual learning? I haven't heard or seen anything about that at all. There has been just one, again, I've done research, but I could be wrong, there has only been one COVID-related death through the age of 20 in Maine. These kids have spent an entire summer mask-free, in summer school, mask-free, spending time with other children, mask-free, at camps and sports without masks. It makes absolutely no logical sense to subject them to 100% mask-wearing. This should be a parent's choice. Hammond, Lewiston, Bonnie Eagle, Madison, Herman, McCollum, to name a few, actually believing their parents and are letting their parents decide. They are standing up and letting, they are standing up and standing strong as a community and not being pressured to feel like they are alone. And I hope that you guys as a district feel, and if you listen to your community members and feel like you're able to stand strong, like bulldogs know how to do. I do not want this community and our board to feel like we are being pressured by other communities to see that we have to do what everybody else is doing. We're bulldogs, we don't do that. We stand strong for what we believe in. Let's also take into consideration the amount of stress, depression, anxiety, and suicides that have been put on drastic rise among young children this last year and a half. How can a child learn how to pronounce any words correctly when they can't see their teacher's face? They can't see their teacher's lips move? They can't see their teacher's nuts? A smile goes a long way. When you are, when that smile is confined, it goes nowhere. It stops there. Teachers' jobs are to help our children learn and grow, it is not their job to teach other children, it is not their job to teach our children how to wear masks, how to remind them to pull it up over the nose to wear it properly, how to stay 6 feet apart from their friend. If anything, teachers can remind their students to wash their pants, that helps the transition. They can also help them remind them not to touch their face, just like I've been watching from sitting in the back, how many times have they touched their face to pull up their mask? Just like the children do to touch their face to pull up their mask, to pull it down, to pull it over. Science and politics don't mix, the Delta variant is, we'll have another one behind it. COVID is a virus, viruses mutate. All these viruses that you are finding are mutations of a virus that is doing exactly what it does, it mutates. There is currently no state of urgency and no mandates, that should tell you right now that parents should have the choice. Parents know what's best for their children, not you, not me. I encourage those who think differently to turn off their TV and do some research, and if you think that you're masking children five days a week for six hours a day is okay, I want you to go sit into that 80 and 90-degree classroom upstairs with very little ventilation with a mask on and see how well you do it. Please do the right thing and maybe it's the parent's choice.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
You must be able to.
Yep. So I've been around for a very, very long time. I graduated from this school in 1977. I've put four generations of kids through these schools, and I'm on my last generation to the I'm going to race. I have my granddaughter who won the doctorate, and last year was, well, last year was a try year for her period, but for school, she loved going to school, she loved the social. She come home with five or six masks and been saturated all day because she had lost her four front teeth, and every time she talked, she would spit a little bit, and so the germs that people think the masks are protecting are really harboring, the germs, and my granddaughter was quarantined a couple times and never, ever had anything wrong with her throughout the whole school year. And, um, my granddaughter was quarantined a couple times and never, ever had anything wrong with her throughout the whole school year. I think that it should be the parent's choice, the grandparents' choice, or whoever's raising children today. It should be your choice to decide if you want to wear a mask, fine, if you don't, don't. I personally find them to be more of a hindrance and they contain a lot of germs. So I think that should all take that into consideration. I've been a nurse for twenty-five years, I'm a nurse practitioner, and currently in my nursing position, I've seen people that have had the vaccine. I have two friends right now that are in the hospital with blood clots from the vaccine. I've seen a fifteen-year-old girl vaccinated and she lost her fallopian tube and an ovary from the vaccine. So, and when they say transference, that's really the shedding of the vaccine. People that did get the vaccine, that's shedding, but they'll call that transference. So, um, and for children, the numbers, like we go previously, I said, the numbers are low. Kids get colds and kids need to get colds to build that immune system as they grow and go through the world and whatever it's going to bring for them. And by hindering any, any virus, you're really hindering their immune system. So I'm hoping that you all take into consideration a lot of things and just let the parents raise their kids. We already have the governor telling us healthcare workers what we're going to do and come out to refer us, we may not have any medical care. So, um, you should really just let the parents do what they do for their kids. Obviously, they don't want to see their kids sick, they don't want to see anything bad happen to their kids, they love their children. But like one of the teachers said, the mental health issues are huge. Kids need to be able to see people's reactions and how people respond when they live everyday life. I haven't had a time myself because I'm hard of hearing. So every time I see somebody with a mask, I go, oh, please talk loud. And I go and I'm all going, hi, hi. And even when my granddaughter has her mask on, you know, she'll wear it, she'll do what she's supposed to do. But it's very hard to understand and it's hard for them to breathe. And when you're not, you're breathing in carbon dioxide because that's what you breathe out, that's the waste that your body puts out. And you're still keeping some of that in. And we don't know the harm, the long-term harm of that.
Right.
People are just saying that it could be, you know, it's saving lives. It's, you, nobody really knows. You don't have any data to say that we can think that. I mean, unless you have no flu, we had COVID, we had no flu. And every time a person gets a cold, people look at you like you got COVID. People are going to get sick, people are going to get mild illnesses. And I think that we should just listen to the parents, let us do what we want, let our kids wear masks if they want, if they don't want, whatever. My granddaughter's been everywhere, she's been to Boston, she's been to, um, Gray, she's been to the fair, she's been to gymnastics camp, she's been to dance camp, she's been to swim camp and meets and everything. And my granddaughter is healthy because I only enforce the mask when the school makes her wear. Other than that, she is not wearing a mask. And we are against the mask, but other people that are for it, that's great, you all have a choice. Let's leave the world as a choice, let's not be too fucking communist world and let's let the people take care of their children. Thank you.
Tommy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good? Hi, my name is Danielle Holt, resident of Albion. My son is four years old and this is his first year, um, in MSAD forty-nine district. I feel a little sad that my son's first year of school, he could perpetually have to wear a mask. How do I explain to my four-year-old son, he has to wear a mask for six hours a day? And yes, Albion pre-K is the only school in the district that goes full-time. I'm here to be an advocate for my son. My son at four years old deserves to see his classmates smile, he deserves to see his teachers face, he deserves to run around free on the playground and be a child. My child is allowed to go to Walmart without masks, my child is allowed to go out to eat at the family without a mask, but is unable to get an education without a mask. When it is seventy-five or eighty degrees in the classroom on a hot September day, is it even safe for our children to be in a mask? Please think of the children and the young children for six hours a day in a mask. I graduated from MSAD forty-nine in two thousand and twelve and I love this school. I respect every teacher and every employee, every board member here. I was once an employee of MSAD forty-nine and I hope this school gives the parents a choice to mask, to do what's best for our children, to get the best education and best experience possible. Just let the students be students and kids. Thank you.
Kelly McKenzie, I'm from Albion and I didn't plan on speaking tonight, so I don't have anything to say here, which will probably really surprise everybody who knows me because I usually have a lot to say. Um, I have two thoughts about this. I mean, we're looking at two different sides. We're looking at the health and safety of our children and our community. And then we're also looking at the mental health and so many of us just want our kids to have a happy, normal school experience. We're tired of them living in fear, living in fear of an invisible monster that could get them at any moment, living in fear of each other and other people because they might spread this, this disease. Um, I have had three children go through this school. My last child is starting June, he's here. He adapted to the masks very well, to be honest with you. Um, better than I thought he would as a child who grew up with sensory problems. Um, I was very surprised. What he did not adapt to was the social distancing, was the removal of his normal routine, the separation from his friends. And what a lot of these children, and you'll notice by seeing what they write on my, what they say to each other, a lot of them have lost their everything for each other and for everyone in the world. Covering our faces. Our, our expressions are how we learn how other people are feeling, how we express ourselves. And by preventing our children from learning how to identify an expression of feeling, somebody's emotion, is in some ways taking away their humanity. So when we go to a doctor's office for a medical treatment, we always have to weigh the checkered balances, the risks and the benefits of every treatment that we agree to accept or don't agree to accept. We have been through, what, eighteen months of mask wearing, social distancing. Unfortunately, we live in enough of a rural area that we have not had a huge outbreak, a pandemic, as it is here. Should that change, I would expect that the recommendations would change, that our behavior would change because we do have to protect each other and everyone else. My grandmother was in the nursing home during this pandemic. She did get COVID during this pandemic, she did have the vaccine during this pandemic, she did pass away during this pandemic. And it wasn't COVID, but not the disease, it was the alienation and the depression of not understanding why nobody could come to see her anymore, why she couldn't see our faces, why she couldn't be hugged and held until the day she was lying there taking her meds. I want my child to be an empathetic and caring human being. And he can't be that if he doesn't know what anybody is doing. And the masks prevent that. So while I do think they provide some health benefits, I also do not think that children wear them appropriately. I think that hand washing, keeping your hands wet in your face is a much better way of doing this. When they wear things on their face, they're constantly touching their face, which is how they interact with the virus in the first place. As of right now, my vote is they go to school without masks unless things change in the future. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board before we move on?
I'm Lacey. My name is Lacey, can you hear me over there? I'm from Benton. I was not meaning to speak. Um, I have two children in high school this year. And for the last week, I've been working with seven to twelve graders because I'm a band teacher mom, I'm the president. And I have seen over thirty children all together so happy because they can see each other's face.
Yes.
And the teacher who runs the program is like, who are you? I haven't seen you in eighteen months without a mask and I cannot identify you. One of your children I saw at her work and she's like, do I know you? And I'm like, I don't know, maybe, but I couldn't see her face through her mask and her at the work. And she finally told me her mother and I was like, of course I know you, I've worked with you for years. Our children can't see each other's faces, our teachers can't see the kids' faces. Nobody knows who anybody is. But you know what, on the weekends, on vacation, those kids are hanging out with each other without a mask on. So what is the point? As he mentioned earlier, most transmission is to the community. So why can't the parents not choose what they're going to do? If they're going to get together after school without a mask, going to each other's houses, having sleepovers? Let the parents have their own choice. Thank you so much for listening to us, have a great night.
Hi. Actually, I'm Ashley from Benton, if you don't know me, hey. However, I want to follow and circle up with what she just said. My daughter last year was homeschooled along with my son because I wasn't playing the game of all this. But it has such an impact on their emotional and social existence in this world. I'm a very social person, I'm a huggery. So my kids are kind of the same. And unfortunately, there are a lot of children that go to school for their say-so, that expect their teachers to give them that love that they can't give because of all this, which is extremely ridiculous. And I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to come up here and speak. I'm a little emotional about that and I'm trying to keep it under control. However, I have seen the negative side effects that it has done to my kids. They chose not to come to school last year because of all this. So we did the homeschool thing. They're willing to risk their health to come back to see their friends, to come back and see teachers that care about them, to come back and have a normal life. And unfortunately, I have kids that are in band, and that's not unfortunate, they're excited about that. My kid came home today and she said, oh my God, Mom, I made so many new friends today, this person and that person. And she is the youngest one in the marching band. And I just suspect that people on the board tonight think about it. Like, stand up for what is right for our kids, not what your position is on the board. Like, take a stand for our kids because at the end of the day, like, they're the ones that are suffering. Like, how do you say it's okay for my kid to go to football with no mask on and be in each other's face? But, oh, he has to wear a mask when he goes to school and learn math, but he doesn't know what he's doing and he can't understand his teacher because she has a mask on her face and he has a mask on his face and nobody can breathe because they're on the second floor and it's like a hundred and twenty degrees? What are we doing? What are we doing? Like, I'm sorry to get this worked up about it, but everybody here tonight feels the same exact way. And if you guys don't do something about it and just let us, like, let us choose. If your kid's vaccinated, great, if your kid isn't vaccinated, great. Do what's best for you, let me do what's best for my kid. They want to just go back and be normal. Why can't they just have some type of policy? Why does this have to be a big debate? For funding? So we're supposed to like have our child's health in jeopardy because? Do you really think that everybody's washing their masks every night when they go home? Sorry, that's a joke. Do you think that those little kids that wear those masks are washing them? No, parents are busy. People have things to do. It's ridiculous. And I'm pretty sure a lot of you feel the same way, but I don't know why I want to do anything about it. So here I am, sending my kids back to school because why? They want to see their friends, they want to be social again. But how are we supposed to be social when they're like sick and half of you, we couldn't hear you talk because you're masking and everything? And some of you have no mask on, you sat at the table, you put it on. I don't understand it, there's no logic in it, none of us understand it. So if you want to show us the facts of how the masks actually like work, get past it. Thank you.
I'm Danielle, I am in, I live in Benton. I have a unique situation where I'm a parent of two children at Benton Elementary and I also teach first grade at Benton Elementary. I am not going to take much of your time, I just want to touch upon the fact that summer school students did not wear masks at all. They did have to wear the wrong glasses and they were allowed to if they chose to at school. We did participate in pool testing, I was also an active participant in that. Once a week, students could, if their families agreed, we would test it and we had zero outbreaks. I will say, after having the year of being masked and then teaching these first graders, I had twenty-four first graders, without a mask was eye-opening to me. I didn't quite realize how much the mask was impacting these children until I was able to work with them without a mask. Their smiles, their laughter, their joy of being at school was completely different than what I experienced the whole year prior. I really encourage you to just let parents decide. We know what's best for our child. Don't put that on you, put it on us. It's our responsibility as their parent to make that choice for them. Thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking. I'm Ava Gatterman of Princeton. I have four children in the district, three different schools. Um, we have a transition between selling and buying a house, he lived half an hour away, and I'm being able to get a super credit for him, drive a half an hour twice a day to break and pick up my children because this district is jowly. We struggled because this was first started this year. Our sixth grader came home crying the first two weeks because he couldn't see any of his friends. The ones he could talk to at lunchtime, it was from the other end of the table. He had to gout and then he got a trouble for yelling. He had to gout and then get a trouble for yelling at cafeteria. He struggled the entire year because he couldn't breathe. Every time he came out from pickup, I had the aid of conditioning on because he was so incredibly hot. He went through multiple water bottles just to make it through the day. I have another child that lives in summer school who never wore a mask. And all of the parents coming in and out of the school, most of them did not have masks and we were all waiting in school and in classrooms. My daughter's doing double sessions of soccer this week. No masks, in or outside of the school. She did not know that her coach was her librarian when she was seen once a week last year because she couldn't recognize her without the mask. She was excited to know that it was a librarian and didn't know it was her. I have a PTO member and I could not see her students. I had other parents in the school ask if PTO still kept doing anything. I felt awful. PTO did parties and was in the school on at least a monthly basis, doing all kinds of activities for the kids, and we couldn't do that. I sobbed the year before COVID struck. I couldn't sob last year because I had a high school that was online the entire day and I could hear my three other children trying to do school in the background while she was live. So I had them standing. This year, I'm hoping to sob. But I promised my kids that they would not have to do hybrid running this year and that they were going to be safe when they were at school, if not that they were going to be okay. I really urge you to make a parent's choice. As a family, we did struggle with the emotional part of this year of last year. I hope that isn't the case this year. I really thank you for your time and hope you truly consider everyone's options. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Kelly Frazee from Benton. I'm going to speak about the masks, but these parents have said everything that I would say that I love. Amazing process. My question is, do you have a choice? In the mask mandate? Is the state forcing you to have the children there? Do you want to share your opinion about that? Do the emails not do a little stuff about that? So I guess the biggest concern is if you guys have a major decision. Because why not come in and write? I spoke with the Assistant Superintendent of the District in regards to reading the laws to the funding of the school. Sometimes you guys have a choice. Because sometimes you guys miss funding when we're state of the pack. Such as full testing. Which I understand that some parents didn't get the information about the full testing. The Assistant Superintendent explained it to me, that they need thirty percent of the distance in order to get any funding. And I said to her, "Why are you hiding it? Because we won't get the funding yet." This is not about money. This is about action. You need to get a seal against it. They're not going to hold funding. This is all based on fear. They want you to fear. They want the public to fear. You see, I'm a dead man. We are being feared. So we're not money. They don't have any left to choose. They want the children. They want, they want the children. Let them be chosen. They love the students. They love the teachers. Don't take that away from them. Michael. For you guys, it's a full test. And then I asked some questions, yeah? Corn's been sent home to all the parents. Explaining exactly what full testing is, the mask, Assistant Superintendent said to me. It's about genetics, the DNA. And I'm not just about the bridge. So I asked her, "Why won't you just come out and tell the parents anything?" "Why?" She asked me what I told the children, what I can write. If the state is forcing you to tell us, show us the way. That's me, though. Also, we see that that's on June 13th. Late to the school day. There was no, like, edit. There was, it is on the day. Oh, the IT department. Oh, it's on the email. I see someone wants to turn us over to me. Well, I'll just send it. She sent it to me via text. Still, nobody. What is it? Do all the parents get every, all the information that they need from the school? I question you. When you receive thirty percent of the genetic, don't stop them. Everyone needs to be informed of what's on the list. You guys are the second of all. If this is a state mandate, could you, yes, you would not. But the Assistant Superintendent said that you don't have to take this. He would be the president of the school. A kid can come back here. They love a kid. Love him back, master. Love you, kid. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Scotten. I currently reside in Benton. I'm moving to Benton shortly. I graduated from Lawrence in 1996, so some of you may remember. My parents also graduated from Lawrence. I have two kids who are currently attending. I have a fifth grader at Benton and I have an incoming freshman at Lawrence. I also do my professional career. I'm a school counselor for MSAD 54. So I've been working in the school district for, it's gonna be my eighteenth year now. I'm a hundred percent for parent choice. I do not think that masks should be mandated for many reasons, most of which, most parents have already touched upon. But personally, I also have a child with special needs. He has autism. I worry way more about what he's missing, being forced to wear a mask every day at school than ever catching COVID. He needs to see emotion. He needs to see people's mouths move when they're talking. I always see some missing all of that, so I get a little frustrated. But I get it. I get that everyone wants what's best for their kids. We all do. And I understand everybody's coming from different levels of education on the subject. And I try to stay open-minded and I try to listen to everyone's thoughts. So thank you for everyone who did share. But I just want to make sure I have my voice heard and my speech doing this. Give me a room full of kids and I'm very comfortable, but I don't like speaking in front of adults, especially when it could be controversial. But I wanted to make sure my opinion and thought was heard. And so I'm a hundred percent hoping that you're listening to the parents and that masks should be a choice. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brady Drake and I have three children in the district. And we had a really, really rough year last year. And I tried to work in full-time, receiving multiple phone calls from the school. My heart was always dropped to the ground, like, "Oh my God, what is this now?" It was always something. I have one child that has stayed home multiple times. But my other two kids could go to the bathroom. And I spoke with the nurse. She's like, "Oh, come on." The other two are fine. Where can you go? I'm like, "Well, we have one bathroom. Is that okay?" "Oh, yes, that's fine." So two out of the three kids who came to school, and I'm trying to work, trying to do the hybrid thing. And all I can say is I just want a fresh year. Let's start the school year great and have no masks. Please, let us choose. I'll sign away where, please. That's all I can say.
Bill McFadyen. Probably what you know. I've been coping well since nineteen eighty-three. Been involved in school a lot. My wife already said that I've turned some of the way up too now. I think it's very, very important, as many people have said, I know from being a dad all this time. Very important that the kids see the faces of their peers, to learn how to read people as they grow up. Because small roaches, once you got to the real world. We have to learn to read people. No one would pay for that. No one would watch for this, right? And start that in school, learn that there. And it's very important that we put the mask off. It must be a parent's, if somebody wants to learn natural, then we have to honor that too, everybody. Our feeling is that it's time for children to be able to go to school every day last year. Really, really, thank you. We need that everyday school, no masks. Thank you very much.
I want to make sure everyone's heard and we're almost at our hour mark, so.
My name is Marla Beasley. I'm from Benton and I currently am student of MSAD 49 at Junior High School. I really think this is a very ridiculous situation of going back and forth. And I really do like going to my band camp with having to wear a mask and being able to be free and able to see other people's faces, being able to smile at others and tell jokes and see other people laugh and be able to be happy and expressing myself. And I really did take my year off yesterday from last year and be homeschooled because of last year's mandate. And I was really hoping to go back to school without a mask on. I've been walking down the marching band field and seeing football players and soccer players without masks on and having fun and practicing. And I've been able to be having a fun experience here with my band listeners and all my friends. And I really think this is the way it should stay. And say to the parent's choice that if they want us to be vaccinated, okay. They don't, oh, well. If we don't want to wear a mask, we don't have to. I think it should be a parent's choice. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is AJ and I'm from the district. I kind of grew up in the next district because I, I'm a virgin from my small school, but I've been having a job during the school district. I see a lot of parents and a lot of students here that are displaying their buildup pride. If anyone knows what dumb pride is, they know what it is. And they're saving our rights and their rights as parents in the community. And they're hoping you're going to be the bigger job to fight for them. Thank you.
We are at our hour, so... Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
My name is Alisa Buttra. I'm a step parent of two kids in the district and I graduated in class of 2006. I just wanted to come up here and say that I haven't heard anybody say back that all of you that are wearing masks stood up for the pledge and pledged the liberty and justice for all. That should tell you right there what our answer should be in the district. Freedom to choose. Thank you.
We are going to move on now. Old business, there is none. New business. I'm updating the 2021-2022 school calendar.
Thank you, Danielle. I did send to the board my recommendation on how to adjust the school calendar, the school year's calendar, to reflect a recent settlement with the Teachers Association and the bargaining agreement for a total number of workdays as 184. So I recommend that the last day of school in the current calendar is June 17. I recommend that it becomes June 16 with the last day, the three emergency days drops from June 27 to June 21. That would reduce the number of student seat days from 178 to 177 and that would bring the total days for our teachers to 184.
Thank you, Alba. Does anyone have any questions? Is there a motion to amend the 2021-22 school calendar to align with collective bargaining, to align with the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Directors and the Teachers Association? It's been moved by Katrina Segmitz by Ray to amend the 2021-2022 school year calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thirteen? Zero, zero. Which means pass. Moving forward, the fall 2021 school reorganization.
At first, I'd like to acknowledge that each one of us recognizes that this has been a try. Someone mentioned eighteen months for any human being, any person in any workplace, any child in any environment. And I want to thank the public for attending the meeting and sharing your thoughts. And I have heard from many people. What I would like to do this time is just read a statement that the Chair and the Board who you understand are thinking, my thinking, behind what I'm going to recommend. And I prepared a piece for eyes to just hold for the significant differences in our plan as compared to last year. And I've also invited a physician, Dr. Robert Stevens, to also share his thinking and expertise from the perspective of his medical practice as a healthcare provider. That's right. I'll just begin. I am sure the opening of the school is on your minds. It is certainly online as we prepare our plan. Our goal is to return our students to full-time in-person instruction for the entire school year. Our goal is to return our students to full-time in-person instruction for the entire school year. We expect all students to return to in-person. We will do all we can to limit the spread of illness, the number of those needing to quarantine through school and outbreak status, as these factors, among other things, are grave disruptions to a student's education. We intend to continue to implement any of the COVID mitigation strategies as possible. We will offer pool testing, social distancing as much as practicable, additional lunch mobs with assigned seats, hand washing, frequent touch point sanitizing, and limiting visitor access to buildings while in session, some examples. We will continue to work with our local pharmacy to offer vaccination clinics on-site as families and staff opt to access. The Maine Department of Education, the US CDC, and the main chapter of the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics, recommend mitigation strategies for school reopening. The Maine CDC's Division of Disease and Surveillance updated its SOP, standard operating procedure, on August twelfth, and that must be followed regardless of local mitigation strategy and protocol decisions. Pool testing and vaccinations are among the highly recommended strategies to quarantine through our school. So is universal masking. While children under twelve are not eligible to receive the vaccine, that may change early this fall. As this COVID situation evolves and likely more cases emerge, we are faced with making some decisions regarding what would require of all people returning to our buildings. Considering the goal to return as many students to full-time learning as many days as possible this school year, I am not only concerned about the spread of illness, but the great disruption to learning caused by quarantining students from school, potentially ten days' reach exposure, and the closure of individual school buildings due to outbreak status. This happened with some frequency last year despite hybrid courting and even with fuller enrollment further reducing the in-person groups. And as one person spoke from the floor, deaths, hospitalization, contracting illness affects people at different levels, but there were eighty-two positive cases of COVID associated and affecting those people in these buildings. There resulted in nine hundred and ninety-eight quarantine events. Sorry about that. Nine hundred and ninety-eight quarantine events, and that included eight hundred and thirty-two students and hundred and sixty-six staff, and some of those individuals were quarantined multiple times. Some students three and four times. And I, I think it's important to note that that is something that we are compelled to follow. Our nurses spoke through the protocol, contact families, we received robocalls, and certainly all the communication, uh, from the very first case on October twenty-third last year, shortly after our opening, uh, right through June, um, those were reported to our community. So there are four exemptions from quarantine on the August twelfth updated SOP. One is if an individual is vaccinated. And we already know that, that half our student population, those under twelve are currently ineligible for that. A person has previously had COVID in the past ninety days, and these are all, but they are asymptomatic. Um, participates in weekly pool testing, weekly school pool testing. And the fourth exemption is that the school has mandatory masking policy, a universal masking policy. Uh, it is not an exemption that an individual is wearing a mask. It is spelled out very clearly in the SOP that the school institutes a universal masking policy. From what I'm receiving from feedback, there are individuals who feel strongly about their students returning to school if masking is required. And those as concerned that it will not be required. And I too have feelings about mask wearing, as does each of us. And I can assure you that my thinking about what we will be requiring in schools to keep all people safe has evolved. And I spoke to the board and the community in June. Uh, someone said that we thought we had turned the corner on COVID. I, I read from what the governors had written, um, and shared, and that our Commissioner of Education, Penderma, made an issue, that that has changed, that it is, is changing daily, um, and, um, certainly it has changed in recent weeks. So I want you to understand that my responsibility is to make recommendations to this board on not how I feel or how, uh, people who work in this system feel, um, but what medical experts recommend, what the Maine Department of Education recommends, what our team can support, but most importantly, what will provide not only the safest but least interrupted environment for students to access in-person learning. Masking is inconvenient and uncomfortable, but is also temporary, but I believe necessary right now. I will also recommend that we revisit this in mid-October and gate to the environment. So at this time, I just wanted to run through, uh, a few slides about what our opening will look like. So whereas our plan is the full-time in-person learning for all students, and as I just said, the goal, the most important thing we can do is get all children back into the building so they can learn and engage with their peers, and we expect all students to be there. We will do all we can to limit the spread, the number of needing to quarantine, and that is one of the things that has, um, been one of my greatest struggles. There's the health concern that people are going to contract the illness and become ill. But there is also the other impact to children missing school and families needing to provide care. Right now, our families are probably anticipating that five days a week versus finding childcare for, for young ones especially every other day, and the cost of doing that, the cost of childcare, the cost of losing time from work, all those things have been very, very difficult, um, as we moved through, uh, last year. And I want to do all we can to avoid that. Um, I am concerned about the potential for that happening. So the mitigation strategies we have in place, we intend to continue to implement many of the COVID mitigation strategies as possible obtained from last year. With addition of pool testing, I thought our, our school nurse at the high school, uh, last June, I believe, presented to the board, the community on pool testing. The intern looked at that, um, the link is right up there, it's in the news art, because there's a whole host of information there on pool testing, testing. Social distancing as much as practicable. And there was a question, there was maybe a legitimate question. The pool testing threshold between thirty percent, uh, related to, uh, a condition, um, moving social distancing from requirement to recommendation. Last year, it was a requirement that we social distance, that's why we're in hybrid. About a week after that was published, uh, by the, by the department, um, and we, we hadn't met that threshold because we were working very hard to meet that. We all we can to ensure a return. And again, the most important thing, every kid there, every day of the week, all year long. Um, that condition was removed, so we're still going to offer that optional testing. The state has arranged for that if parents wish to participate in that. Uh, we are going to offer it, coordinate it, we can look for, um, the consent mail, we're going to send them, um, through school packets, through the mail, but they're also right online. We're going to continue with the additional lunch mobs with assigned seats, hand washing, frequent touch point sanitizing, limiting access to the building. And we'll continue to work with the pharmacy, Shane Savage has done us, um, uh, a great service in providing the clinics here for this, and that's just, if parents choose, it's, it's a great convenience and our staff. And the main deal, we will help us also offer and coordinate plans. But the other mitigation strategy is universal masking. Cleaning and hygiene and screening, cleaning schedule for buildings will be expanded. Sanitizing, disinfecting, cleaning will follow CDC recommended protocols. Hands-on tests, sanitizers will be available, threat buildings, frequent hand washing encouraged. Classrooms will be furnished minimally to allow for distance among students. Teachers are working hard to set up their classrooms now, but leaving as much real estate in the room to keep people apart as much as possible, um, in those settings. Parents will continue to be asked to screen children for symptoms prior to coming to school, and our staff will complete self-screen before arriving on campus. Masks, masks are required right now on buses, vans, uh, public conveyance, uh, were required to wear masks. Masks will be required in our schools during the school day, other than times and locations, and these are some of the distinctions. Uh, during lunchtime, no one has, principals have individual building protocols that are ready to share with families, but we are going to offer assigned seats. So again, if there's a positive case, it is not a whole swathe of cafeteria affected as close contact attacks, but the people and students nearby within three feet. Outside, no masks outside. And, uh, staff have worked very hard and creatively, um, and Scott Washington's, his team have worked to put up structures, give shelter in August in the sun and September even, but getting kids outside to learn as much as possible, no masks required, no distancing required. And that is the difference. I've heard, um, individuals reference co-curricular, you know, marching band or soccer practice. Right now, kids are, kids are out there, first of all, freely participating, they participate by choice. They're not compelled to be in the space, but they're, they're outside. Um, some of our school buildings, between student enrollment and staff who work there, we're looking at seven hundred plus people in a building. That is fantastic right now. Um, and during, uh, mask breaks, we're going to offer more mask breaks, encourage more mask breaks. I did hear from families, um, concerned about that, and at least allow children that time for a break. And I think our staff did a great job scheduling that, but we'll, we'll be sure that, um, they schedule more of it as much as possible. School protocols, outdoor learning spaces, as I just referenced, will be utilized and encouraged. The lunch, I talked about, virtual meetings and events will be utilized and appropriate. Uh, again, the, the concern is bringing a lot of, a lot of people into the space, um, and exposing people in the space. You know, there's, there are teaching staff, our support staff, they are our workforce, they make the place run. Uh, there was a point last year, the only time, where the whole school district was shut down because of our transportation department. I'm not blaming the transportation department, but that's one area where we're fragile. We have a very few number of people moving out of operation, um, and it, and it was vulnerable, and it's still making it. And our principal will be sharing those, um, school building specific protocols. Remote learning, we will not be offering remote learning, remote synchronous learning. Our educators, administrators, and staff all support students' full return to in-person learning. Five days a week, students are more successful in person, as evidenced by last year's data. Uh, we do not have adequate staffing to offer in-person learning. And our teachers here are best equipped, uh, to offer in-person, and that's what our institution is, is, is staff right on the ground, that's what we believe in. Um, and we, staff have agreed, we recently met with, uh, our Teachers Association just a matter of two days ago, just to clarify, uh, the process. Teachers will post assignments for students experiencing illness or quarantine. Um, and asynchronous, like non-in-real-time learning often will be available where, um, assignments will be posted through the classroom, uh, for grades three through twelve. And we really wrestled with grades K through two. Um, we'll utilize packets through sheer classroom, we'll make the documents available in PDF, um, or, uh, we will also offer printed copies. We also may force into remote learning, uh, with a, with a shutdown. At that time, teachers will be doing the synchronous learning as, as happened this year, as happened when we shut down in March. Um, I hope that doesn't happen, but we're prepared to do it. The fundamental difference is this year, the mask requirement will be reevaluated locally, um, in my intention, um, as I had mentioned, uh, mid-October seems like a good amount of time. We'll give opening a few weeks, and we'll see where we're at. All students will be in school every day, distancing requirements are not in place. And to think about the amount of quarantining that happened with half the student population present is astounding. What we haven't tested is how are we going to be standing, um, when everyone's back home? So the universal masking is one of those mitigating factors that I believe will allow us to reduce those instances of quarantine and affect fewer kids.
I don't mean to be, I'd just like to say one thing.
Masks will not be required outdoors at any time, and if sufficient space can be maintained, like in offices, masks not required, and mask breaks are allowed outside and inside.
Why did you invite us here if you already had your plan in place? I don't care if you can speak out.
On your kids, one other piece.
Excuse me, guys, we were just like, oh, we listen to you. This is part of the.
That's not happening, you're already making that.
Jordan had her mind made up.
Why are we talking to her tonight? You knew what this was going to be.
And she didn't have a mask on when we came in. She put it down and she sat down.
They're going to continue, uh, we're not for meeting.
And are the kids going to be given laptops if they choose to stay?
There's no choice.
There's no choice.
Okay, I'll just conclude this, and Dr. Stevens is here to speak to us. Um, so we've considered regulations with health professionals, the CDC, the Maine Department of Ed, our teachers, local superintendents, local medical professionals, perhaps for vague families, and actually students of grade seven to twelve regarding who concerns, and for students what they look forward to, and that is a reopening or return with, with all their peers present. Um, as a reminder, health and safety is, is our number one priority. Um, but I do realize that the COVID-nineteen positivity rates are increasing. Um, so some data to consider as we move forward and reassess this at some near future point. Are the local positivity rates, the school rate? Uh, we had, uh, several schools fall into outbreak status, um, at one time at, at, two occasions actually caused a school, during the school building. Uh, county designation, county vaccination rates, average daily cases, hospitalization active cases. So at this time, at first one, I'd like to thank, uh, Dr. Stevens and Dr. Sullivan for coordinating this, to join us this evening, um, and share his thinking, and also, uh, address any, uh, questions the board might have. So thank you.
Is the board not voting? That's just my question. Is the board not voting?
Are you voting on this?
Are you guys ready to continue? There hasn't been a motion made yet. There needs to be a motion made.
My child should have a choice, just like you seven board members, and you have no mask.
But this homeschooling.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stevens.
I'm going to take the event stand just to talk, so you can hear me better. Um, so I want to thank the superintendent person for inviting me. Thank you board for, for listening to me. Um, I think this is really important that we get to share different opinions. I think that does inform our decisions. It's good to have empathy for each other as we kind of wade into this. I'll just say before I start, um, it's a difficult decision you guys are making. You're, um, you're waiting for a population, for a group of people, not just individuals. And I think sometimes that gets, that makes it hard. We're doing a lot of individual stories that are challenging, and these type of policies don't fit everybody perfectly, but you guys have to make a decision based on a community and a group of people, that, that can be hard. So I'll try to keep this kind of succinct so that, um, you can just kind of follow my, my thoughts, but, um, as. thoughts, but as Lieutenant Person said, cases, hospitalizations, deaths are rising in the United States, especially in certain areas that are higher hit with rates of community transmission that are increased, lower immunization rates. If we had this discussion two or three months ago, it probably looked different than it looks now. And I know some people get frustrated that it feels like things keep changing and our recommendations keep changing, and that's because we learn more and this virus changes and we have different recommendations depending on the situation. So I like the idea of revisiting this as this calendar goes on. As of today, the seven-day average of new COVID-19 cases in the U.S. is over 150,000 a day. In May, it's 142 as of today, the seven-day average, and that rate's rising. You look at the trends, there was a big peak in the early fall, November, second peak around April, the summer was pretty low, and then we've come back up again in the last few weeks. We've seen numbers like this before, and the increase now is concerning for new diseases. This Delta variant was present in 100% of COVID-19 cases within a VHS range in May. It's here, it's circulating. This is the virus strain that's more transmissible, that has a higher rate of hospitalization and death for adults. We don't have that data in children to know how transmissible or how many hospitalizations are related to that in children yet, but there's no reason to think it's different in kids than adults. We have very great vaccination numbers here, 73% vaccinated in Cumberland County, 49% in Somerset County. Since vaccines have become available in May, 98% of the cases of COVID-19 have been among those who are not fully vaccinated, 96% of the hospitalizations among those who are fully vaccinated. Numbers are increasing again, and we're here tonight to make wise decisions for the months ahead. The Delta variant is affecting children more significantly than the original coronavirus strain. Kids now infect 18% to 19% of new COVID-19 cases across the country. In states that are heavily hit, that's about 2% of the hospitalizations, which sounds like a small number, unless it's your kid. Children under 12 are not eligible for the vaccine, and they are required to attend school. This puts them in a uniquely vulnerable situation.
May I ask just what your source you're reading from?
CDC.
CDC. I hope you shared your name.
I'm sorry, Rob Stevens. I, I work for Maine General, I'm a physician in Oakland, I'm a team physician for Mesolonski High School, I have about 1,000 nation population, I have four kids that are in the school system.
And this resource was printed?
What's that?
What was that resource printed? That you're reading?
This is just what I wrote.
What was it printed?
One that I printed today. Yeah, these are, these are data from this morning, I looked up today.
And you're a medical doctor?
Yes. So beyond this, we're understanding more of the impact that kids play on transmission others, primarily family members. There's a study in the Journal of the American Medical Association just this week, almost three days ago, that showed that younger children are more likely to transmit this virus to family members, which are two, three times more likely. The younger the child, the more transmissible. I believe we share a common goal, which is to help our children in all ways, physical, mental, emotional, spiritual. I've seen enough evidence of the effectiveness of masking and transmission precautions, as well as the effects of this virus in our community, to recommend that this is a reasonable approach. Where we are now, we're holding rates going up, more transmission supplies, vulnerable kids, this makes sense to me. I know it's probably not popular in this room to say that, but, but that's my opinion, based on my experience. So I welcome questions, if you have anything I can answer, that's interesting.
Does anyone have a question from the board? Actually, the.
I have a question.
From the board, this is not our, sorry.
I should be on the board.
And you're more than welcome to say it.
Everybody needs to start getting on our board, taking care of their own kids, not somebody that doesn't have a.
Excuse me. Right, move on.
I'm sorry.
Come on.
You have, it's great, he's a smart guy. Where's the other doctor that's against him?
Let's not have to be.
One side you do.
We value your.
I've been getting out of school before, I don't want to.
Okay, that's fine. So there are no questions?
I can't hear you.
You guys. If the motion was to call 2021. Say it again. There is, it's a motion by Katrina to approve the Fall 2021 school board school opening plan as presented, this is accepted, viable. Is there any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I have just a question about the board's agenda for warranty. So obviously, I am wanting to, or three and four of the school testing, and maybe it's more than that to the public, but did they go give a mandate, or did it like, the cops or not?
As I understand it, our nurses will be here for September 2nd to clarify that, but so, student, these are, these are the exemptions out of, out of the board, as I explained, and, and the consequences, but the other pieces still see it. Regarding the SOP for classroom exposure, and this is just classroom. Students who are deemed close contacts but are fully vaccinated and asymptomatic and not need to quarantine and wearing masks. Students who are deemed close contacts and are participating in pool testing and are asymptomatic will not need to quarantine and wearing masks. If all students are masked but not vaccinated or participating in pool testing, then the three-foot distance single will be applied when deemed a close contact. So in a classroom where one, one person said they had 23, 24 students, it is those students seated, and that's why there'll be assigned seating in that perimeter, that radius of three feet. Does that clarify that, Billy?
Are there standards on the masks to be worn, like if you're talking to a colleague, or if you're providing.
No, so that's a certified, right?
No.
And are you requiring the students to provide you with proof of vaccine?
Excuse me, I can't, you can't hear the board. If, if you take over, maybe universal masking.
Mm-hmm. It's hard to say. But they're going to.
Well, so I know that the point of the board is limited warranty. So if, if we vote against the masking policy, will we quarantine until we're in for it?
So if we don't have masks, what is a consequence for quarantine?
There'll, there'll be a wider scope of students included in that. And also, this is just for students that do universal masking.
You know what's like quarantine, then they doesn't want.
No, because that means, so that means the larger amount of students will be.
Yes.
Okay.
The, the document's available on the main Department of Education's website, and you have those provisions there in front of you at the upper left page, it's all listed, those board instructions.
Here you are. Do you have more evidence? Not more amazing evidence than the board. If, excuse, if a student is to be vaccinated and has children to be vaccinated, then that type of quarantine.
They need to be asymptomatic and wearing masks.
And.
Yes, but for students who are in a, you know, are, are younger children under 12, an exemption is universal masking, it's, it's, universal masking is to be in, in the.
Correct. So this is third topic. Why, like, you're holding, eliminating, not like, like.
We can't hear her.
It'll, it'll also, you know, slow the spread of illness, because there's positivity in the community later, sooner.
But our overall.
Should we have a medical professional answering that question?
Ask the doctor, tell them.
Yes, yes, it's offered, but parents present it with, they can participate in it, sometimes it's just good information to have, or maybe some reassurance to have.
Yeah, Lieutenant Person, we were, we're, we're, in regards to masks in general, is there a outline as to what is expected for mask testing in this proposal? It doesn't appear as though there is a mandate as far as what the mask actually has to be implemented.
No, we're, no, it's just mask-based programming with frequent mask breaks. Again, that is probably one of the key points to take away from this, these are meant to go outside, mask free, there's no limit on distancing when they are outside and, and unmasked.
And how to wear a mask, is it over your nose?
Teachers, what's your thoughts?
The question I have is, the universal plan after the look at, you know, when you look at the vodou, which requires us to take another look, you know, for us, for universal masking.
Yes, that's my, my recommendation. If we are, if we're able to do that, that, again, that's, you know, in the ATE and our, but like now, it is, it is our decision. Yes.
So yeah, I mean, that's a great point. I appreciate what you're saying about that in October. When we look here, this is, this is the note in June 19th, this is local June 19th, we have highlighted Mills Avenue expects school return. This is the change in events all around the time. That means the same changes can take place in the other direction by October. We can be back to school like we used to be as soon as October. This is not a school year-long confinement to wear a mask. This is a temporary, essentially step towards sustainability, so we can get there on opening of.
My name is Susan Shaw, I'm a medical professional, I'm a medical professional, I've been practicing with the medicine since last fall, here at the University of Wisconsin. I'm, you know, taking care of local hospitalizations, I've had long calls, yes, some heart patients, I've had COVID in my household, and I just want the board to understand that this new variant is different than last year. Last year's COVID variant really did not affect children, I see children in the hospital. This Delta variant seems to be moving that, from the data we have so far, in itself particularly in the last week, there are, you know, hospitals, numbers, there's 1,000, 100 pediatric hospital patients. So I think we have to really think about that, and, you know, there's, it's just so open up themselves, I'm just seeing, because of law, who are in complicated areas, with all staff and students as well, you know, I have multiple colleagues that take care of the hospital patients all around the country, particularly in itself, you know, the death rate is climbing, and the hospital rate is climbing, and as I, I grew up in this community, I had to hold on, I wanted to make sure that, you know, that keeping children safe, and not just the children, but the parents and the grandparents and our entire community safe, is critical, and to make sure that everybody is well, and more, and more, and more, and more. You know, there's a reason why all of these professional organizations are recommending certain things, because we look at data, we look at numbers, and we see that the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, the National Health Association, Maine, you know, all want to make sure that, and we open school, and everybody is aware that it's safe. And, and like, you know, what was stated, it is true, you know, it's typically 10 to 14 days of transmission, so in two, three, four weeks, we can come back and reevaluate things, we'll get our numbers, see how many students are out. But I think the universal masking policy is a guideline because if a positive kid in that class, it's only that kid that has to stay home, the rest of the class continues in full session, that's what I understand. So we will continue to follow the curriculum, continue to get these kids through their school year, in school five days, I think that's our, that's the main goal, and if I can, if I can, if this board can advise us to really focus on that keeping our community safe, it's not just the kids, it's our entire community. I keep saying over and over, we're lotta dying, we're, it's in the world. So we're starting a whole new variant that has significant new awareness of ability and fitness. So COVID, the Delta, Delta, um, the Delta variant, so the original COVID beta, the variant, had an arm value of negative value, you know, above 3. Flu is two, our highest virus that's ever known for contagiousness is chicken pox and measles, it's a value of, of nine, and, and Delta is eight. It's a very high transmissibility. So when you all come together, it's going to be a concern, all of these children going back to their families.
If it's so much worse than last year, how come you don't provide a remote option? If you're about safety, why is there a remote option this year? Why are you requiring everyone to come to school? If you are about safety, there should be a remote option.
Children can also be very different, it's very different. Once the, the younger children have the option, they actually can have some protection. You know, I think that that makes a big, I think there's, there will be a spread of to be a very, it's a lot, because children will come, some perception, and this is coming, for the numbers.
What about that? Hey.
But she never answered her question about the, the one child being quarantined.
I understand that last year's coronavirus is different than the issues of coronavirus because of the record. And so they have a question, who's the person that's.
Thank you.
She didn't answer her question. Does the child get quarantined first? That one child out of the classroom?
Does the board ever have a question? Or comment?
I think it's unfortunate.
So, maybe you see on your, because the sleeves do not need to rub anymore.
I just. I just saved it.
Okay.
Of course.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify, I think what was said, or what you can answer, if we have universal masking, and a child tests positive, we're going to pass through. The only person that would be required to quarantine and to stay home from school is the child that tests positive.
If you would open that up on page five.
That's a yes or no.
Isolation, quarantine. And I'll just, I'll read this. Right up the SOP. I will comment on how I read it, and it's free for anyone to review. Isolation and quarantine, students, teachers, staff who test positive COVID-19 shall isolate until they meet the U.S. CDC criteria for release for isolation. Close contact, so it must be notified for any COVID-19 case in students or staff. Close contact definition is exposure within six feet. Close contact definition is exposure within six feet for more than fifteen minutes within a twenty-four hour period or direct physical contact. Close contacts must quarantine for ten days from COVID-19 exposure for school and school activities. Except if at least one of the quality conditions applies to the close contact. One, the close contact staff or student is vaccinated. And if the exposure occurred more than fourteen days after the individual's completion of the vaccine series. If the exposure occurred after vaccination but prior to fourteen days, the close contact must quarantine for the full-time period. Or the close contact staff or student has a previous positive COVID-19 test result. Molecular or antigen collected within ninety days of the exposure. Or the close contact staff or student participates in weekly pool testing. And exposure was a school exposure. Or the school has a mandatory masking policy. If so, then an exposed classroom student does not need to quarantine for regular school day activities. When the student's close contact was at least three feet from an infected student. Laboratory confirmed or clinically compatible to provide that. One, the school enforces consistent and correct use of well-being masks and no direct physical contact occurred. Excepting on the floors, we're into classroom exposures only. Exposure to the current buses, cafeterias and school sponsored activity do not eligible for exception work. Excepting without quite key to staff or other adults in the classroom.
Can you go back to your first and second paragraph when you said release of isolation? Where is the child on that?
And did I hear you correctly that we are not able to keep this exposed? By sending everybody back to school this year, we aren't able to obtain this exposure.
That was correct. You're not able to achieve previously, like, that's why we're.
So that kind of led to applying our situation. If we both want to work, if we want to work, then.
There, the, the physical, we are, we are removing this distancing. To get everyone back.
Are they putting our kids in isolation?
Maybe that part of the, of the.
I don't think so. Was she just writing in that second paragraph?
In addition to that, though, and we're trying to, we're quarantined, but we're trying to limit the spread of the illness. And it came back to, with the science, with CDC, with, with Dr. Stevens that shared with us. And Melissa shared with the board. That's got decisions for this, uh, health and safety question before you, for all students in the building.
But I do think we need to involve in a three-point wait, that we can recover as to how many students are out, um, to make those appropriate decisions. I think, I, I think that it's, it's still, um, it's very new. My parents' generation, our generation, we have went through many times this pandemic. And our generation is, you know, trying to make the best decisions for the kids and staff. And we're doing it quickly so we don't hide. And all of the experts are saying this is right, we need to do it. And I think that it is, we need to, and we watch people, so that, that, that's what. Go with, uh, go with the nurse, because she was my friend.
You should go to church.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor of? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstained?
Two, three.
Do you like this one?
Right on.
Right. Okay, before we go to the table, all those in favor of? To approve the fall 2021 school opening plan as presented? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Sorry, I didn't see. All those opposed? Five, zero.
I need someone to oppose.
The motion passed. Moving forward, resignations. Scott Mallard, LHS math teacher. Damon Villan, LHS special education. Chris, um, Brooke. Lawrence Junior High teacher. Valerie, Chris, Lawrence Junior High, opposed.
And you all agree, you know who you are.
Sarah Riddle, Benton's special education teacher. Summer Rucker, Elian Elementary counselor. There were two that have recently been added that did not meet on the agenda for the board. Chris Markku, Benton's elementary teacher. Gretchen Ross, Lawrence High School guidance.
Not to retire.
And not to retire, yeah. Appointments. Melissa, I'm going to put her in, I'm sorry. Madam, um, Madam, Lawrence Junior High School art teacher. Tina Crapier, Benton's special education teacher. Beau Mercier, Clinton, grade four teacher. Carlin Perry, Lawrence High School science teacher. Kesley Rohan, Benton guidance. Julian Thompson, Clinton, grade four teacher. Samantha Van Pout, Lawrence High School math teacher. Tina Crapier, Lawrence Junior High guidance. Is there a motion to approve Devon Cole, the best Lawrence High School junior high custodian as a ninety-day evaluation period recently? As the move by Terry is seconded by Neil to approve Devon Cole for Lawrence High School junior high custodian. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thirteen, zero, zero. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, so all those in favors are twelve. Oppose, none, abstain?
Who seconded that, I'm sorry, who seconded that motion?
Neil, all right. Any community reports? Uh, super encouraging report.
Tonight I'm going to turn over my responsibility, uh, to put something, uh, to Scott Washford, uh, to talk about, um, the work that has been going on this summer. I agree with some of that, and I think that you on our facilities, um, some great upgrades and improvements. Um, and one being, um, you voted to approve us to have a school-based health center. And that is reconstructed, it will be set for opening, it'll be, uh, not only a great facility, but a great resource for our students and their families at Lawrence High School. So Scott, you share some of that with us.
Thank you. Um, so this summer we, we have taken on, um, a lot as far as projects, not just, um, by outside contractors, but in-house as well. So one of the projects we're working on, um, we're near completion of the phase one part of the ventilation project at the high school in Junihaw. They should be out of here in the next week or so. They're still waiting for some, uh, materials to come in. They will have to finish part of that, um, this fall. But that is, is winding down. As Roberta said, the school-based health center, um, is near completion. Um, it's coming down to the wire, uh, been really pushing hard, uh, for contractors to get in there, uh, everyone's so busy. But it should be up and running for the first day of school. We've done a lot this year of carpet removal throughout the district, um, which is, you know, is, uh, better quality for students and staff. We have completed, um, approximately one hundred eighty-two hundred windows at the high school. And right now we're in the process of, uh, rebuilding windows at the elementary. The high school lobby bathrooms, um, have been remodeled. That is basically completed, we just have to put some, uh, light fixtures in and put some sound house back, and that will be ready for school. And as most of you probably witnessed tonight, when you pulled in, you saw some of the paving project here at the complex completed. That should be completed by midweek, um, next week, so that is going to be a huge improvement here, I believe. We also did a couple of paving jobs throughout the district. It just, um, paving was getting to the point where it's a safety hazard. And especially up here, it allows us to, um, space students out and have, um, activities outside as well. Benton, we are doing, uh, energy recovery wheel replacement. We replaced one of the three about ten years ago. And the other two are at their life, um, ended their life expectancy. So those will be completed at this fall. That is the, the bigger projects, but we've also, you know, did this regular summer cleaning and a large amount of painting this year. I would, I would really like to thank ours and my staff. Yes, a lot of this work has been done by outside contractors, but it has affected them. They had to bounce around, they had to move furniture. Uh, we have a lot of furniture to bring back to allow all the students to, um, be back here. So they have been working extremely hard, um, to make sure we can come back to school. So I want to thank all my staff, technical crew, maintenance, facility, bus drivers who've been working in schools, monitor, game drivers. Uh, support staff, just everyone. It's been, it's been a huge team effort to get to the point where we're at, and we still have two weeks left, almost two weeks, and we still have a lot of work to go. So they've been working really hard, but I'm very proud of them and everyone should be. Thank you.
Any questions? Moving on, other visits. Is there a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA section four oh five six A to discuss contract negotiations? Anything to second? The move by Katrina, seconded by Roy to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA section four oh five six A to discuss contract negotiations. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thirteen, zero, zero. We're in, um, nine oh four, we will take about five minutes.